And first on the hit parade, as the mayor likes to say, is Springfield Central High School, Israel Robinson, accompanied by Principal Ted Togard.
Hello, everyone.
Just to, I don't mean to interrupt, but make sure you keep your voices up. That records, but it doesn't amplify. So let's keep our voices up.
My name is Israel Robinson. I'm a senior senior official from the state. And today I would like to share with you guys how wonderful this is and attending this Springfield Central High School. Sorry I read my own.
Technology.
So on behalf of the students and staff at Central High School, I would like to thank all of the principals and school committee members that reached out to us for support during the last three weeks. Although it was a difficult time, your thoughts, prayers, and donations helped us through that tragic incident. Tonight is our senior banquet, and I am looking forward to spending the time with my classmates at the Huki Lao. We would like to congratulate our varsity wrestling team for winning their third consecutive Western Mass championship and wish them luck in the weekend's states tournament. We would also like to wish our men's and women's basketball team good luck in upcoming Western Mass basketball tournaments. Our seniors are starting to receive their college acceptance letters, and we are excited to start the next chapters of our lives. Many of the colleges and universities will be sending their acceptance letters on April 1st. I am excited to hear from the University of Notre Dame. I have already interviewed with alumni from all of the Ivy League schools besides Yale and Cornell University, and I think all the ones that I did interview before went very well. On December 13th, I was informed that I received early acceptance to the University of Notre Dame. The university flew me out for the weekend.
Wow. Congratulations.
They flew me out for a weekend just about a week and a half ago. I got to miss two days of school, a little break. And they showed me a lot of what they had to offer, and I wouldn't have even made it here if it wasn't for being challenged at Springfield Central High School, because they love to see a student who overcomes the barriers in front of them. And I have some barriers in terms of education, and I was able to overcome those things, and that's what popped out to them the most. We are getting ready for graduation and hopefully get to see all of you on June 8th at Symphony Hall when we receive our Central diplomas. Thank you so much for your continued support and guidance.
Great job. Congratulations, Israel, to Notre Dame, one of the greatest schools in the country. Next on the hit parade, the Springfield Conservatory of the Arts, Alina Sayez, Nathan Matos, Sayan Delgado, and Ryan Kelly, principal. Please let me know if I pronounce your names incorrectly.
Superintendent Warwick, esteemed school committee members, hello. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is April Wesley, and I am the visual art teacher at Springfield Conservatory of the Arts. It is my honor to introduce three of my students who are here tonight. They are Nathan Matos, Alina Sayez, and Sayan Delgado.
Good evening, Superintendent Warwick and distinguished school committee. My name is Nathan Matos. I am coming from Springfield Conservatory of the Arts High School. I would like to talk to you all about the mural my fellow classmates and I have made for the Hampton family in Pro Bay Court. When presented with this project, my art teacher, April Wesley, she wanted my fellow classmates and I to give this mural a fun, carefree theme. So I took on this project because I have done spray paint art for a decent amount of time. So I taught my fellow classmates the techniques I use to make my spray paint art look decent and grab the viewer's attention. The design behind this mural is to give children that walk through these doors a sign of peace or something interesting to look at if they're in a depressing family problem. I believe that the happiness a child deserves should be endless, or in other words, out of this world, which gave us the idea of the galaxy background for our mural. Everyone knows the feeling of being a child, having the most fun, playing and having their innocence intact. Unfortunately, some children don't have that or can obtain that because of their family situations. They give their child a state of comfort and feeling of safety and warmth. I believe that the children who walk through these doors can have a state of ease looking at my art, because a child's happiness should be acquired and not taken away by unfortunate circumstances. Any viewer will see we have painted children on this mural, playing and having their happiness and innocence intact, giving the children who look at this painting hope for the future. This is the meaning behind the mural we created.
Hi, my name is Alina Sayez. I have attended the Springfield Conservatory of the Arts since the school opened three years ago. We wanted to tell you about our work on a mural that hangs in the Hampton County Courthouse on the floor of Pro Bay and Family Court. We have created a mural by the name of Textures of a Family to show the various types of families' lives, such as foster care, grandparents, raising grandchildren, single moms, single dads, transgender parents, and families led by two dads or two moms. We hung this mural at the courthouse this summer at Skoda. We integrate, I think it's, wait, hold on. We integrate the arts. The last project we worked on, integrated art anatomy class and drawing class. We drew organs to connect to anatomy class to make it realistic and surreal.
Hi, my name is Sayan Delgado. We are currently working on creating instructional videos for the district on how we use visual thinking strategies in our classes and reading image.
Good job, guys. Got the bow tie on. That's always good. High School of Science and Technology? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Forgive me.
Now I would like to throw in what our school is doing. We are doing a musical on The Wiz, and we'd love for all of you to attend when we have a set date and time. And we would like to present the gifts of our murals to Superintendent Warwick. Thank you very much for attending and listening to me babble about our work.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Public employees can't get a gift worth more than 50 bucks, so I don't know if we could have to... But thank you very much. Great job. High School of Science and Technology is next. Alexis Cruz Aponte, Ashley Rivera, accompanied by Sarah Pragolski Walsh, principal, and Timothy Malone, assistant principal.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
We have two amazing students here tonight, and they're going to briefly speak about the awesome opportunity that we have at our school. It's called HUGS. It's a caseworker program that directly aligns our academy's students' specific needs, whether they be family-based, community-based, home-based. Remove those challenges so that our students can focus right on academics. We're part of the great leadership of Ms. Flores, who is hiding over there. And we have a wonderful community-based collaboration with the Stein Schein Behavioral Clinic, and we have some of the caseworkers here tonight. So without further ado, here are two amazing students.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Alexis Cruz. I'm in 11th grade at the High School of Science and Technology. I'm in the HUGS program. It's a meaningful educational program. I was bad, and I wasn't going to class, and I was skipping, getting into trouble. One day I came down to the library with one of my friends, and I met grandpa, aka Mr. Cofield. I asked Gretchen, and made me feel uncomfortable because I didn't know him. After that, I was asked by Ms. Flores if I wanted to be a part of the HUGS program, and I agreed, because she said it would help me to get better. But the moment I realized this was working, was the moment I noticed myself going down to the library to see my therapist when I have bad days. She talked to me, helped me to calm down, and easier to get back to class. One time I told the team that I wanted to be a firefighter. They brought a firefighter, tied them from station Dreamstream Field, to come to talk to me about becoming one. They appointed of graduation and college education. It helped me to decide that this job, I mean, yeah, that this job was what I wanted to do. He told me to stay in school and get good grades, do all my work, and be careful who are, yeah, be careful of the friends who I hang out with. I have also been working on my job application, because I wanted to start working so I can get my own money, buy my own things, and help my mom to pay her bills. We have also been talking about me going to college and taking the exam to become a firefighter. I feel this program is helping me to achieve my goals, and I appreciate all they don't, that they do for me. Yeah.
Nice job. Nice job, Alexis.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ashley Rivera. I am in the 11th grade at the High School of Science and Technology. I came here today to let you know about my experience that I have had so far with the HUGS program. Back in December, Ms. Flores came to me and told me that someone wanted to meet me. This is when I met Becky. Becky is my therapist, and I have now been working with her for about three months. I never really knew what a therapist was, never mind thinking I actually needed one. In the beginning, the first meeting was them coming to my house and meeting with my mother to let her know about the program and how it would help me succeed throughout the rest of my high school. My mother was on board right away, of course, and HUGS kept calling my mom to tell her about how I am doing. At first, we started to work on my grades by going through my classes and seeing where I needed the most help. We broke it down by each class and made a plan of how I was going to get things done. This helped me a lot, because I became very stressed at the work that I was missing. We then focused on getting me to classes and coming to school more than a couple days a week. During this time of trying to get myself back on track, I had lost my grandfather. I have been one of my grandfather's caretakers for a couple years now, so you can imagine how difficult that was for me. When letting my therapist and the rest of the HUGS members know this news, they did not hesitate to be by my side through this. They came to the wake, checked on me, and helped me find places to donate all his belongings. Recently, I've been talking about that I would like to start looking for a job. I'm going to be 18 this summer and feel that it is time to gain some experience. My therapist, along with the HUGS program, is now helping me with completing the resume, filling out job applications, and preparing me for the first interview. I am not going to lie, getting to school every day and getting my work completed is a struggle, but knowing that if I am having a hard time, I not only have one, but a group of people there to support me.
Great job, guys. Thank you very much, and thanks to the HUGS program. Next is the High School of Commerce, Anishka Ayton, accompanied by Mr. Lunsford, the teacher.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rick Lunsford. It was my plan to have Anishka Ayton here with me this evening. She's an impressive young lady, full IB student. Unfortunately, she's delayed in her travels. It's still my hope that she will arrive.
Okay, we can pass it till the end of the list, and then we'll come back to it.
Great, thank you.
Okay, all right. Thanks very much. Putnam Vocational Technical Academy is next. Mikel Malone, David Bass, Bill Scott, dean of students, also Jamie Pozo and Aiden Abdi. Is anyone here from Putnam? Did I not get those names right?
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is David Bass Jr. I'm a junior at Putnam, and I'm here representing with the lovely Mikel Malone. She's one of our leaders. I'm truly honored and grateful to God for being here on today, having the opportunity to stand before you all and talk to you. Something that I always thought was so great about Putnam since I've been going there is our willingness to get out and do. And we have a plenitude of clubs and organizations that we work with in and outside of school in the community. We have clubs ranging from the Outdoor Adventure Club and Gay Straight Alliance to the Video Gaming and Snowboarding Club. We take part in Skills USA, hosting regional, statewide, and even national vocational competitions, and last year we took home quite a few medals. We have also the 21st Century BSEP program that conducts various after-school activities such as dance classes, face and body art, and the like. One of our biggest partnerships is with Springfield Scholar Athletes and the Gear Up program, geared towards helping our students and athletes obtain scholarships and get prepared for the college life. Recently, we had our annual Black History program, and we have performances from students and staff, and we had a guest speaker come in. His name is Mr. Peterson. He also goes by the name The Chief, The Poet. And he came in, and he spoke, and the program and the Black History Club is centered on embracing the Black culture and celebrating the history. And since it is Black History Month, we went forth with our program. Our major constituent, where we have majority of the students and the staff involved, is Chris Herons Project Purple Anti-Substance Abuse Initiative. With it, we have our Putnam's Voice Community Outreach Group and all of its leaders and help involved, and it's linked together. And through the influence of Project Purple at Putnam, with all of our leaders and help, we've made it to a plethora of events over the past few years. And recently, we've made it out to events such as the First Responders Night at Bright Knights in Forest Park in cooperation with the Spirit of Springfield, showing support to our neighborhood heroes, our firefighters, police officers, and servicemen and women. And also in cooperation with the Spirit of Springfield, we cooperated with them. We volunteered in their balloon parade. Annually, we rally in the Puerto Rican Parade and the Raise of Hope Breast Cancer Awareness Walk. And with Putnam, there are so many leadership conferences and seminars that we go to. All of our leaders are involved. We have a ton of staff involved. And with Project Purple, we keep it running at Putnam with our pledges. We have students and staff, if they would like to take a pledge to take a stand against substance abuse. And our I Am movement, we're challenging and encouraging everybody to point out one positive thing about themselves, and then we post the cards up around the school. And also, our sports teams, they get involved. They wear their Project Purple shirts to the games. Recently, the Springfield Sting basketball team, they wore their Project Purple shirts in their game in the Basketball Hall of Fame. So we have, Project Purple is very prominent within Putnam and all around. And there's so much zeal, there's so much enthusiasm within our Beaver community, and so many clubs, groups, activities, and events going on, that I'd say it's hard not to get involved. It's a beautiful thing to behold when the staff and the students are in cooperation, working together to accomplish our key goals. It's just wonderful. There's work to be done, improvements to be made, goals and dreams to be realized. And by the grace of God, we at Putnam are making that difference within our community. I'm David Bass, and I'm representative in Putnam.
Great job. Jamie Pozo from Putnam Vocational.
My name is Jamie Pozo, and I'm a parent of a student that goes to Putnam High School. I am a member of Pioneer Valley Project, and I'm also an immigrant from El Salvador. I am a member of this community. The slogan for Springfield Public School is a quality, sorry, culture of equity and proficiency. The dictionary defines, definition of equity is that quality of being fair and impartial. And the recent statement that was made by Mr. Sarno regarding immigrants and refugees are not aligned with the definition of the equity in our school districts. I expect fairness from our school district leaderships and also from the city leaderships. To isolate the entire group of people in our community is not productive, and in fact, it's painful.
Excuse me, ma'am. Are you a student at Putnam?
Yes. My son goes to Putnam, and actually he's...
Well, this is a student, this is a student speak-out. I mean, we understand what you're saying, and we respect that.
You want to hear your speech, we want to hear it, but this is a student's speak-out, so we definitely want to hear what you're saying, but I think there's a different...
Yeah, this is, you know, we have, everyone signs up beforehand. They're all students of the high school.
And I also did, and...
I know, but your name was not, was added to the list, but it was added to the...
Yeah, but I talked to you.
Excuse me, hon, if I could just finish. It was added as a student. You were, it was represented that you were a student, so...
No, I said...
This is a student speak-out. So, I mean, we do have speak-out for any member of the public once a month. I forgot, I don't know what the next public speak-out is, and we understand exactly what you're saying, and many of us agree with what you're saying. But this is not the appropriate forum for that. You know, you have to be a student.
We have tried different ways to be able to get through Sarno, and unfortunately, he is avoiding us, so that is why we are also here. And I understand this is a student's...
You can come back the next week. We definitely want to hear it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we have, I'm sorry, but we have a long list of people who signed up, and they're Springfield Public School students. So is there any other students from Putnam Vocational?
We had two, I'm going to stop students. We had two, David Bass.
David Bass and Mikel Malone were the ones we had on the...
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Next on the hit parade, Springfield Renaissance High School, Demaya Mangru and Bridget Carey, accompanied by the principal, Aria Coburn, and Sasha Malu Garcia. Please correct me if I pronounce your names incorrectly.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sasha Garcia Mayu. I'm one of the assistant principals at Renaissance, and it is my honor to introduce two of our junior students who will be talking about the Three Light program via our art collective, Demaya Mangru and Bridget Carey.
Welcome. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Demaya Mangru. I'm a junior at Renaissance. Bridget and I participated in a showcase downtown Springfield at the Springfield Central Cultural District Art Show. We're a part of a club at our school called Three Light, and we're a part, we participate in the street art aspect of the club. Street art is literally us expressing ourselves with spray paint. The Street Art Club is literally an extension of Renaissance. It encourages us to express ourselves and just make a statement. And Renaissance, the school, encourages us to build relationships with each other in order to positively, positively express ourselves.
Hello, I'm Bridget Carey, and I'm a sophomore at Renaissance. And we join the Street Art Collective to express ourselves in artistic ways and make the city more beautiful, or make your school more beautiful, by presenting it to the school and hanging it up around the school. And when we went to the, when we presented our art downtown at the Springfield Central Cultural District, I made this eye from spray paint. And this shows what we do in the Street Art Collective, because there's not really a plan of what we do. We just use our creative creativity, and we just do whatever we want to do. We do that at different art stops all over. It's fun. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you. Next is the Springfield Public Day High School, Juan Bermudez, Quinesia Arnold, Naya Morgan, accompanied by Christian Hinshaw.
Good evening. We have one change to our roster tonight. We have Mr. Devin Boyd.
Devin Boyd, okay.
Naya could not make it.
Good evening, Superintendent Warwick, school committee members, and all others attendants, and attendants, I mean. Our names are Juan Bermudez... And we are members of the Springfield Public Day High School Student Council.
We again would like to thank you for the opportunity to represent our learning institution. Our parents, teachers, administrators, and classmates were all proud of the fact that we spoke at the last high school meeting.
Tonight, we want to provide you with an update on what is currently going on at our school.
The Student Council organized and ran a very successful carnation sales this week.
Money generated from this sale are being used to purchase soap and deodorant in order to, for us to provide less fortunate students with much-needed personal hygiene products. I think we can all agree, sorry, that creating more confidence in students will help to create a better learning environment. We also decided to call this investigation the Smiling Good Shop.
We now have a Springfield Public Day High School basketball team. Approximately 20 students participate at varying times with the basketball team. This team is tied directly to PBIS, and students need to be on green card in order to participate in this activity.
In other news, our beloved art teacher, Ms. Cooper, has done providing staff, students, and parents with a monthly newsletter on what is being learned, specific teachers' classrooms are, as well as what is happening around the school.
In closing, I would like to thank Superintendent Warwick and the school committee for continuing to support the Springfield Public Day High School. I again want to thank you for inviting us to the following, sorry, and allowing us to have a voice at this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job by the Springfield Public Day High School. One more call for Commerce. Is Commerce, Anishka? She been able to make, oh, there she is. Okay, great. Anishka Ayton.
Good evening. I'm Anishka Ayton, and I'm a senior at the High School of Commerce. I am a full IB candidate, and I am pleased to tell you today the IB program at the High School of Commerce is growing. Commerce students are not afraid to step up and challenge themselves. The IB program is a very rigorous program. However, many students have come forward, as opposed to previous years where students have shied away from the program. This year, we've had many acceptances to many colleges thus far, schools such as University of Arizona, Louisiana State University, and Leslie University, amongst many other colleges. Upward Bound is a club in the school, and it has been helping first-generation and low-income students to be able to finish college application, do FAFSA's or anything possible, so they'll be able to go to college. We don't only think about our students, but we also think about the community. We have clubs such as Key Club and the Commerce Care Coalition, which have been working with the community, giving back to everyone. We also care about the personal achievements of our students. Recently, a High School of Commerce senior, Brianna Machenna, scored her 1,000 career point in girls' basketball. And just recently, we won a relay in Boston in our meet last week. Thank you for your time.
Great job. Thank you very much, High School of Commerce. The International Baccalaureate Program doing great things there. It's, our regular meeting is scheduled to start at 6:30. We're going to take a five-minute break to, you're welcome to stay, but if we can clear the room, if anyone would like to go. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the school committee meeting, Thursday, February 16, 2017, the regular session. Call to order. Could do a roll call.
Mrs. Gretchen? Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Present.
Mrs. Hurst?
Present.
Ms. Murphy?
Present. Absent. Again, the mayor, his mother is having surgery, and she's, we're praying for her and thinking about her, and the mayor and his family this evening, and Mrs. Sarno. So that's why the mayor is not here this evening. So we'll stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you. Item number two on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the February 2, 2017, regular school committee meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. Item number three, items requiring a vote of the school committee, approve a City of Springfield diploma for Jordan Christopher Clifford. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Vice Chair. What we have, is there's a memorandum in your packet, Yolanda Johnson has reviewed the transcript. Jordan Christopher Clifford has now passed the MCAS, therefore qualifies for a City of Springfield diploma, as opposed to just the certificate of attainment, which he had in the past. He went back, retook the MCAS, so he deserves a lot of credit. So I'm recommending approval.
So moved.
Is there a motion on the floor? Is it seconded?
So moved.
Roll call vote is required. Congratulations to Jordan Christopher Clifford for passing the MCAS and getting his diploma.
Mrs. Gresham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Miss Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Stotter?
Next matter on the agenda, approve revisions to the Springfield Public School's student assignment policy. This is the first vote, I believe it's a change to a policy, needs two votes. Mr. Superintendent.
Thanks. Paul Foster and Pat Bradley are here. We went through this in subcommittee, it came through Barbara's subcommittee. Subcommittee approved this and brought it forward to you. There are some changes to the policy, some predicated on some changes in the law, and a few revisions to the policy. The changes are in red in your packets. You know, Paul and Pat are here, if you have any questions, or do you want people, Barb, to go through some of the revisions again to the entire committee?
Yes, Superintendent, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, this went through the student and parent subcommittee, and these revisions are mandated by DESI under the Every Student Succeed Act, to ensure the transportation for students in foster care environment. And we were all in favor of bringing it to the full committee for the first vote.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions on the changes?
Any questions or comments on the revisions to the Springfield Public Schools' assignment policy?
I move we approve.
Seconded.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham, for your work on this.
Thank you.
There's a motion, it's been seconded, roll call vote is required.
Mrs. Gresham?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you guys want to hear?
No, they were there to answer questions.
I didn't.
Oh, no.
Gresham?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
O'Donnell? Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Miss Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes. More than sufficient votes are required. Item number C, approve the Springfield Public Schools' 2017-2018 school calendar. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Vice Chair. We have the calendar in your packet, very, very similar to last year's calendar, following the same model. We have three professional days built in, one occurring on Election Day, one on January 12, because Free King's Day is on a weekend, so we went up with a Friday before it, and one on March 9. Again, it's scheduled for 185 days for students, knowing that we have five snow days built in, but we end the school year when we've been in session for students for 180 days. Starting a week before for staff, and then starting a week before Labor Day for our students, so our students come back on the 28th, our staff comes back on the 21st for professional development. There's eight PD days built into the calendar, just like we did last year. So, again, calendar very similar to last year, keeping our February and April vacations intact, our Christmas vacation intact, and concluding on the 180th day, which we project now to be June 20, if we use five snow days. So, gives us plenty of time at the end of the year, because we come back that week before Labor Day. So I'm recommending approval, it's the format we've been following.
So moved.
Any questions or comments on the school calendar?
I have seconded the motion.
So, motion's been made by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Ms. Hurst. Roll call vote is required.
Mrs. Gresham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Stotter?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Stotter?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Stotter?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
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 Yes. in 1990. Mei Xu has been the lead teacher in Springfield, the Chinese teacher, lead Chinese teacher here in Springfield since 1987, when she joined the faculty of Central High School, where she taught until 1996. She was one of the first on the faculty of the High School of Science and Technology when it opened, and that's where she continues to teach today. Throughout her 30-year teaching career, she has led Chinese teachers with the development of cutting-edge curriculum, effective instructional practices, and assessment. She has participated in a number of national initiatives focused on curriculum development, and is well-known indeed for such work across the country. She is a frequent presenter at local, state, and national conferences, and has been recognized for excellence in teaching and community outreach. Dr. Huang and I have been colleagues since I began teaching Spanish at the High School of Science and Technology in 1999. We both benefited early on in our careers from the strong leadership and mentorship of Dr. Kathleen Reardon, and more recently, from the great support and guidance provided to us by Dr. Kate Fenton. Since 2009, Dr. Huang has served as the lead instructor in our StarTalk Chinese Immersion Summer Program, funded each year by a federal grant. Springfield's StarTalk program, which serves roughly 100 elementary-age children each year, has been recognized as one of the premier programs in the country, due in no small measure to the efforts of this remarkable educator. Dr. Huang brings extraordinary talents and expertise to all of her endeavors. Mei Xu, you bring joy to those around you. You are the epitome of grace and humility. You inspire me to be a better educator and person. I'm honored to be your colleague and friend. And on behalf of all those lucky teachers and students whose lives you have touched over the years, our congratulations and our very best wishes.
Ms. Huang, please.
Good evening.
Evening.
Superintendent Warwick, and school committees, and also friends, and so my students, colleagues here, thank you so much for this opportunity to honor me here. And I'm really grateful for the wonderful support from my students, my dear students and their parents. And for every day's work in my class, they contribute so much effort in the classroom. Without their effort, I will not be able to receive the award. And I also want to thank all of my administrators in my building, all the colleagues, and also coworkers for their help and coordination with me. And also, I want to thank my administrators at the central office, all their support, financially, program, professionally, everything to support me. I really appreciate. Particularly, I want to thank my director, Ann Fariter, every day, every minute, not just for my work, also my personal friendship, and for my family. It's just wonderful, being a part of school in here. Particularly, I am immigrant from Taiwan in here. It's so warm here. And I just hope the award I receive as the Chinese teacher of the state, that honor belongs to the city of Springfield, belongs to the school, the all schools department, all of your offered, dedicated to all of my work. That's why I can have this one. And this is all for you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huang. Yeah, we do. Ms. Huang, hang on, you're not done yet. You got any questions or comments from any members of the school committee?
Yes.
Anyone? Ms. Gresham?
My daughter took Chinese under you, and she loved it, and she loved you. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gresham. Anyone else? Our student representative?
I just really want to say thank you for being somebody who's really been supportive for not only me, but my friends around me. Having you two years ago was the best, the best foreign class I've ever had in my life. And I still remember, I still have those memories, and I will hold them and cherish them for my rest, for my life. Thank you so much.
Nice job. Nice. Ms. Huang, we have a certificate for you. On behalf of the Springfield Public Schools and the Springfield School Committee, February 16th, 2017 recognizes Mei Jieh Huang for being named 2016 Chinese Teacher of the Year by the Massachusetts Foreign Language Association, signed by the superintendent, Mr. Warwick, and Mayor Dominic Sarno. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Justin said congratulations.
Congratulations and thank you. Congratulations, thank you very much. Thank you. Congratulations.
Did you start at Vansickle at the academy? My son had you.
All right, thank you very much, Springfield High School of Science and Technology, Ms. Huang. Next on the agenda, item C, the update on City Connects, the implementation in the Springfield Public Schools. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Bringing up Julie Donovan. Julie Donovan's been in charge of this program since its inception, as well as our PBIS initiative in the city of Springfield. I attribute City Connects and PBIS with a decrease in the suspension rate, the decrease in the arrests, the batteries, the proactive work that's being done in the schools through City Connects and PBIS. Really made a difference in our culture and climate. And Julie's been with us since the beginning and done a tremendous job running it. So, she's going to give you the yearly update on how we're working with the community to provide the kind of wraparound supports that they were talking about at SciTech yesterday, but through many schools in our city. Julie?
Good evening, Superintendent Warwick and members of the school committee. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you about City Connects. Tonight, I will be giving a brief overview of the City Connects model and the results from the 2015-2016 school year. Most of what I'll be saying is basically a summary of this nice little brochure you have in your folders. And then I have Martha here doing my computer work for me on the floor. Okay, so, to start off, I really want to really state our mission and what drives this work. So, the City Connects mission is to have children engage and learn in school by connecting each child with a tailored set of prevention, intervention, and enrichment services that he or she needs to succeed and thrive. Now, you notice that each is highlighted. So, the City Connects model is very proactive, in that it services all students, no matter their risk level. So, for example, we might have a student that is really well-off and doing in academics, and may need, we noticed, may need some boost in self-confidence. So, we will find some services, maybe in the school or in the community, to boost that self-esteem or self-confidence. During the 2015-2016 school year, the model of City Connects was implemented in 13 schools, and there they are. 14 City Connects school site coordinators serviced over 3,758 students in those schools. Each City Connects coordinator, with the exception of Horena, has two because of their numbers. Our numbers in City Connects is one coordinator to 400 students. This bottle, this pretty little flower, is, I think, is really important, because at the center is the student. And we, City Connects, really takes the holistic approach and sees how all of these domains intersect or, you know, really kind of make the child. So, we see the strengths and needs in those domains, and then we connect them with services that might enhance their strengths or might help with those needs. What we do is, we identify each child's unique strengths and needs in those four domains, which was in that little flower, through a process called Whole Class Review. We develop a specific service plan for every child, working with their families, working with the school, and other community agencies, resources. We connect students to a tailored set of support services that may exist within the school or within the community. We follow up and track and monitor and make sure that these students are getting the services that they have been referred for. And then we evaluate what the services are giving to the students. So, if there's, if this service really is working, we ask, and if not, then we might need to go back to the drawing board and see what other services might help with that specific need. Here's a little visual. Every year, during what we call the Whole Class Review season, a teacher and the City Connects coordinator meet to discuss every student in that classroom. What might come out of that is what we call an individual student review via what we call STAT, which is a process in every school called Student/Teacher-Assistant Team. Out of those two processes, processes, or two facilitated meetings, comes a proposed student support plan, and also a tier. We tier our students based upon their strengths and needs. We also then communicate with the families and talk to them about different resources within the community that we might be able to refer to. And then we begin that, like, feedback loop, I like to call it, where we, coordinator, you know, makes the referral, talks to the families, talks to the teacher about how, if there's been any improvement in behavior, whatever is the need there. So, that's the constant feedback loop that I like to really check out. So, the Whole Class Review, every student, every teacher, every year. This is a very comprehensive assessment, where the City Connects coordinator meets with the teacher during October, between October and December. And out of that, they discuss the strengths and needs in four areas, which is the academics, social, emotional, behavioral, health, and family. Students are tiered based upon the level of strength and need. And then the coordinator recommends wraparound-type services for those students or enrichment opportunities. And I like this little motto, is the right service to the right child at the right time. So, we just don't want to kind of throw services at students. We want to make sure that those are the tailored set of interventions for that student. And in 2015-2016, 100% of our students in all of those 13 schools received a Whole Class Review. So, City Connects coordinators organize and facilitate what we call the STAT process, or the Student/Teacher-Assistant Team. So, every City Connects school has a STAT team, and they meet mostly every week. And it's a multidisciplinary team, the ILS's assistant principals, principals sit on this team, teachers, counselors, to discuss an individual who might need more intensive services. And out of that becomes more of a, smart goals are developed and interventions are put in place for more to follow this plan more intensely. And 9% of all the students in the City Connects schools received an individual student review via STAT. Now, that percentage, City Connects likes to have 8% to 10%, so we're right on benchmark for that. So, I think this slide says it all. You know, 3,800 of our students were connected to 19,400 services and enrichment opportunities. I think that's a huge number. And it should be really well-known that a lot of our kids are getting these services that they need. 172 students received at least one service, but the 3,172 students received three-plus services. And that's just great in my mind. This is just kind of a breakdown of kind of the category of services. So, we really look for prevention enrichment services. So, an example would be an after-school program for that. Early intervention would be like tutoring. And then the intensive is more like CBHI services or in-home behavioral therapy is an example. So, those are just kind of the breakdowns and the percentages. Again, this is some of the top community partner-provided services delivered by service label. So, those are just some top ones. Academic support was one of the top ones. Again, enrichment, parent and family donations was a big one. And I think this slide too, I just wanted to put some of the top community partners with the top referrals. And if you notice, some of these are just within all of the domains. They're not just one, like, for counseling. There's ACTS tutoring we have a great partnership with, and they take a lot of our students to do a lot of tutoring and a lot of one-on-one mentoring. Community Music School does a lot of enrichment in our schools, but also within their agency. Family Resource Center is an excellent resource that we use a lot, links to libraries. Reader to Reader is an excellent partner that we have, that actually, a lot of our fifth-grade students at some of the City Connects schools will read a book and then be partnered with a college student, and they will basically talk about the book online and do that back and forth, and they become like a mentor to them. The UMass Nutrition Program is excellent. So, they fall within all different domains, so health, family, academics, and after-school programming too, and counseling. So, every year, we survey our principals. So, last May, we surveyed 15 principals. And those percentages are really high. I'd like them to be 100%, because I'm an overachiever, but, you know, we can't, we can't please everyone. And then the teacher and the community partners are surveyed every other year. So, and we want, we really want to hear what they have to say, so that we can improve the practice and see what they're asking, you know, from us. So, there's my contact information. Some questions?
Very much.
Yeah.
City Connects, any questions or comments?
Yeah.
So, you work with the whole family, correct?
Yes.
So, now during the summer months, do they have some type of intervention or something, some type of plan?
So, we definitely set them up for some summer opportunities, yes. Some of our coordinators do like summer fairs, so that they like bring all of the information to like, sometimes we have open houses in the spring and things like that, or parent night, and they'll have like a table with all different summer opportunities, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Sure.
Add to one kind of tagged on to that a little bit. Do you keep up with the students during like their breaks and everything? Do you always keep in contact with them?
During like?
Like, let's say they were, not even, not just summer, like spring break, winter break, all those, right now?
No.
Okay. And then my other question was just, throughout like the next year, are you planning to grow in like the schools that you're already in, or are you going to expand out to other ones?
We would love to expand, yes. We have expanded this year into Rebecca Johnson and soon-to-be Homer. So, yeah, we would love to, but it's a funding issue, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, so, thank you, Ms. Donovan. I just want to have clarification. So, on your, on the slide that talks about what we do?
Yeah.
So, every child, every child gets evaluated. Is that correct? Or every child gets discussed?
Yes.
And then, when you develop a service plan, are you developing a service plan for every child, or just the children who get identified as being in need of City Connect services?
That is a good question. So, the Whole Class Review is for every student in that class. So, they will discuss those four domains, the academic, health, family, and social, emotional, behavioral. They'll talk about the strengths and needs, and then the teacher and the coordinator will decide if they need some type of enrichment service. If they don't need it, then we don't really, yeah, we don't provide a referral or...
And is that plan or that assessment, is that available to parents to at least review?
They could, yeah. So, we do basically on, we have a whole database that generates a lot of these reports. So, we enter that into a database, and they could have access to it if they wanted to, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments by anyone on the school committee? Ms. Perez?
So, how often did you identify? For example, you visited a class, and let's say some students come in the middle of the year. Did you receive a referral from the teacher, or just has to wait until the following year?
No. So, if the student comes, and we do have that type, you know, population that's in and out, so what we'll do is we'll really track that. So, we'll give the student about six weeks in that class, and then the coordinator and the teacher will meet for that student, yeah.
And that includes from preschool all the way?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Superintendent?
One thing, as I was looking at the list, we started with our Level 4 schools, the seven elementary schools that exited Level 4. City Connects was part of the initiative to turn around that school, was part of the turnaround plan. So, it really has made a difference, not only in the climate, culture, but led to the academic gains at those schools as well. So, it's made a big difference for us. And again, Julie also coordinates the PBIS initiative, which ties to that, and I think those proactive measures are what's turned around the climate and culture in a lot of the schools. And we're adding Homer on shortly, so we're adding another school. We constantly take every opportunity we can to add another school, but the cost is probably near $100,000 per school. So, we're choosing the schools that need it the most.
Any other questions or comments from anyone on the school committee? All right.
Good job. As a lot of students that you're actually process to your program. Good job.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Ms. Donovan.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work that you do. All right, that ends the Section 4 of our program, informational and discussion items. Section 5, Reports of Standing Committees, Student Relations and Parent Concerns Committee. Ms. Gresham? Thank you very much for that. B, Buildings and Maintenance Committee, Mr. Collins?
No report, although the superintendent might update us on yesterday.
Right, we got some good news with respect to school building, it sounds like. C, Legislative and Contract Committee, I believe that's Ms. Perez?
No report at this time.
Report. D, Curriculum Programs, Ms. Hurst?
No report at this time, Vice Chair.
No report. E, Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Collins?
We approved our calendar for, it should have been sent to everybody, along with the request for the members to send in their priorities. And the survey is up, right? Is that, are you back there? The survey is up for the public to comment and give their priorities for setting our budget. So, the process has begun.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, for that report. F, Vocational Education Committee, I believe that's you, Ms. Roldan?
No report at this point.
No report. G is Technology, that's me, no report. H is School Safety Committee, I believe you, Ms. Gresham? No report. And item number six, the report of the superintendent, Mr. Warwick?
Thank you, Vice Chair. We have a couple pieces on the Mass School Building Authority. Yesterday, we went down as a team from Springfield to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, pushing our projects forward. And as you know, we've had more projects with MSBA than any other city in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. With what was approved yesterday, we're going to be over $500 million worth of projects with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. So, some of the big news from the, there's a newspaper article that was put on Mass Live on it. And then you actually have the Mass School Building Authority agenda in your package. William N. De Berry School was approved as an emergency project because of deficiencies in the flooring at that school. School was built with a slab concrete floor that's not going to stand the test of time, so we're putting that in as an emergency project, and that's going to start a feasibility process and a study where they look at enrollment. With that process, MSBA now is encouraging all the urban centers to see if there could be any consolidation in looking at multiple projects. So, we're going to take a look at that neighborhood, and if there's some needs in some other schools, like we have a need we know at Homer School, see if we can combine and put that into one project, one consolidated school, but schools within a school, like we've done so many times. So, we're going to be moving forward, working with the state. We have a guarantee on De Berry, but if they approve the enrollment piece and the addition of Homer, we'd have an opportunity to submit Homer as part of that project and push it through with this project. So, very good news for the city of Springfield. And then another piece of good news is Brightwood Elementary School has gone into feasibility, the second step of the process. As you know, they accepted Brightwood in last year. We're moving forward with that school, and also can explore consolidation with Brightwood School. As you all know, we have a very old school, another very old school in the North End, Lincoln, which was built in 1910. So, if there's an opportunity through the enrollment process, we would build, again, two combined schools, redoing both Brightwood and Lincoln within that. We don't have a guarantee, but we're going to work with MSBA, work with their team, look at the enrollments, and see if that's a possibility, and we'll pursue that opportunity. So, it would give us four new buildings. In addition to that, we had four projects, projects approved for accelerated repair. This is great work done by Pat Sullivan, Peter Garvey and his department. But Zenetti School is going to get new windows and doors, Kensington Avenue a new roof, Marcus Kylie Middle School, huge school, windows and doors, which is almost a $10 million project, and Mary Lynn School a new roof. So, again, we were very, very fortunate to have a great partner with MSBA and Treasurer Goldberg, Jack McCarthy from MSBA, Diane Sullivan, I think have been very good to Springfield. And I want to recognize our mayor, who has never said no to bonding for a project that we've been able to get accepted. And you saw quite a wealthy community in Amherst turn down to new school projects just a couple weeks ago. We've proceeded with over $500 million worth of projects, and the city is ready to do the bonding for all these projects. So, a lot of credit goes to our mayor, our council, and our school committee for finding the money to push these programs forward. And again, we get 80% reimbursement from the state on all of these projects. So, it's been a great value for the city, and I can't say enough how grateful I am to our treasurer and her team at MSBA, because they've been great to work with, and our team at facilities that has been so helpful pushing these projects forward. And again, at all, I guess the buck stops with the mayor, and he's bonded for every project for us. So, it's just great news for the city of Springfield as we continue to move forward.
Thank you, Ms., oh, I'm sorry.
A few more pieces, and I'll go through these quickly. There's a presentation that was to the Urban Superintendents Network, it's about the PISA, the International Test, and the commissioner presented to us last week when we went down there. But we had great news in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and that package is in there. But on the international test, while our country scored in the 30s, Massachusetts against the international competition was second in science internationally, first in reading, and 11th in mathematics against countries across the world, not just in the United States. And in Mass Ed Week, they just did an article where they rated the Massachusetts schools the best in the nation. So, that was high praise, and you can see a lot of information about techniques that help Singapore and some other schools. A lot of professional collaboration is what has moved these schools ahead, not a focus on class size as much as... on class size as much as time for professional collaboration for adults. So, it cites a lot of the best practice. I thought it was really informative. Another piece that's pretty informative we received from the commissioner at the meeting last week was just a rundown of the Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA, as it's being drafted up by the state, and now they're ready to submit it to the federal government. So, what I've enclosed in the package for you is what they're actually going to submit to the federal government as the accountability plan for Massachusetts. Not a big change from what we've had before, and Massachusetts, you know, has had the most difficult test in the country, and I think that's what's led to us doing so well on the NAEP and the international test. But you're going to see ELA and math scaled scores for every school, science performance index, ELA in math, student growth as we have now, the access test for English language learners, and a look at chronic absenteeism, access to the arts, and school climate as the indicators where they're going to judge schools and school systems. At the high school, they're adding, they obviously also look at grade nine course passing rates, advanced coursework, breadth of curriculum, access to the arts, and we've adopted MasCor. And again, they're going to continue to look at the graduation and dropout rate. For Massachusetts, the, this plan that they're submitting to the feds isn't a huge departure from what we've had in the past. It's very close to the accountability system that was employed before. State is now ready to submit. They're pretty much near getting the end of their public input, and this is what they're going to submit to the federal government. If the federal government approves it, that's what the state is going to implement to comply with the new ESSA Act. Another report, our attendance report up through the end of January. As you can see, we're down a little bit on attendance from last year, which was the highest ever, and also up a little in truancy, where we had the lowest truancy we've ever had. It's slipping up a little bit this year. And the last piece is the contracts report. If you have any questions on the contracts report, please let me know. That concludes my report, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Any questions or comments with respect to the superintendent's report? Anyone? So, that's great news to Barry, Homer, Brightwood, Lincoln, you know, school, all schools that really need our help. And we want to thank the mayor, who's always been a great partner with the school department, to bond for that money to build those, to build those schools and to improve those schools. So, it's money well spent, and thank you to Pat Sullivan and Peter Garvey for the work that they're doing on that. Any questions or comments on the superintendent's report? Mr. Olden?
No, one comment. I was able, and a pleasure to go along to Boston with the committee yesterday and also speak out on behalf of thanking them for giving this opportunity for us. But what I found was that we're lucky. We're taking the old schools in the city. I mean, schools that are really in bad shape, that hit the poorest community in the city, and actually fixing them. And I think that's a, it's a great job of the mayor and the superintendent in making sure and, you know, that those schools are addressed. So, he doesn't like to say it, but a good job then.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I think when you look at the Springfield schools, the average age is 55 years old, so we have great need. And when you're talking about Brightwood and Homer, they were built in 1898. So, I would say we really got our money's worth out of them, and it's time to move forward and put the kids in a 21st century environment. So, I can't tell you how grateful I am to everyone for their support with that, so.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Superintendent. Any other questions or comments on the superintendent's report? Any unfinished business under Section 7? Unfinished business, anyone? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, Item 8, new business. Anyone for any new business? We do have one, Melinda Felch, our lawyer. I think there's a little new business there. She's now, I want to embarrass you, but you're a grandmother now, so that's great.
Congratulations.
Happy for you. That's great. Everybody's happy and healthy, and we're very happy for you, Melinda.
Let the spoiling begin.
Yeah.
Any other items that may come before the school committee? Anyone?
Motion to adjourn?
Hearing none. Motion to adjourn by Mr. Olden. Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You guys have it. Thank you very much for watching.